Welcome, everyone. I'll call the meeting to order and we'll begin. Chaplain Daniel will have our indications.
Oh, I couldn't be with you today, but he had some other visits, but I'm glad I could be with you. Let's take a moment. God, when I think of fall, I think of harvest. A time of gathering the results of a year's labor, a time when the execution of good plans with fortitude and effort is rewarded with succulent fruits and tasty vegetables that can last us through the winter time, a time when hard work is rewarded in very tangible ways. And now, God, as we enter into fall of 2015, we as an organization can reflect on the past year and see that good plans carried out with determination and skill have yielded monumental rewards. We are grateful for those who have seen what could be and labored so hard and tirelessly to bring that vision to fruition. We give you thanks for our leadership, all of our associates, for their dedication, their efforts, their giftedness in making Erlanger even stronger organization as a result of their being here and investing their time, their talents, their giftedness, their skill, and even their very lives into this institution. The people and lives of this community and in this institution are impacted for the better, and it truly makes me Erlanger proud. Amen.
And if you, my trustees haven't seen the new chapel. It's really amazing. If you haven't seen it, please stop by and take a look. It's, Mr. Spiegel, the chapel, outstanding.
Thank you.
And I'm not sure who all was involved with it. I think Judy was.
She was.
And I'm mistaken, so Judy, and Bruce, but it was just, it's beautiful.
It was fantastic. Now, we just have to get the furniture in there.
Well, oh, I thought we were finished. No, okay. But again, thank you. You had your agenda. We did expand the agenda just a little bit. We had presentations, special presentations on there, and the new revised agenda actually details where having quality and patient safety presentation by Dr. Kofler. And then, Mr. Spiegel is going to give us the state of Erlanger Health Center fiscal 2015. So with that, I know no other changes to the agenda. Special guest tonight, we do have with us again Jose with Sullivan Cotter. Welcome, Jose. And we have a new reporter that's covering healthcare for the Chattanooga Times, Shreve Press, Steve Johnson. Welcome, sir. And that, we will move to our minutes. You have the minutes in your, you had your minutes in the package, August 27 minutes. You received in your package, I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
And do we have any corrections, additions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Moving on to one, now, you know what? I said about the special presentations, and I'll roll right on down the agenda, so let's back up with Dr. Kofler.
Well, thank you. I feel very fortunate to be here, and this will be pretty quick. So, Mr. Spiegel approached me several months ago about the job of chief quality officer. He told me at that time his vision was to form a new true quality department within the institution. This has never existed as a true freestanding department. His vision that this would be a new department within the system overseeing all of the system, Erlanger, Children's East, North, et cetera, with a separate budget and then reporting directly to the new chief medical officer. So, a little bit of history. I think it's fair to say that quality has been a foundational principle of this institution for decades. It's just never been formally codified as a department. Woods Blake here in the audience, Mike Bettinger, Lynn Marks, Debbie Shepherd, Caritha Weaver, and many others have been doing this, monitoring quality, improving quality very well over the last several years. But these quality initiatives have been very decentralized. You've got some over here, some over here, some across the street. So, the concept of a freestanding quality department overseeing all aspects of quality within this healthcare system has become the standard of care in leading healthcare institutions around the country. And if we want to be one of those, we need to get there. So the goal is to bring all of the currently existing quality-related assets together under one umbrella in former centralized department, led by myself and with able assistance from Woods. We want to utilize the existing departments and assets and add certain necessary people and assets where needed. We have a new organizational chart. It's not been approved. We're waiting on the CMO, but we have some things fleshed out and ready to go immediately and hope to have a budget to be able to accomplish that. Our goal in the future is to be much more intentional, to develop very specific projects aimed at improving specific aspects of care, and then execute those. We want to be more defined in how we do this. We hope to be able to hire some project managers and some system or quality engineers to help us in that, and other people. We want to increase our engagement with UTC to enhance our capabilities with our projects, relatively cheap labor, but more importantly, help develop the quality workers in this community in the future. We get to vet these people as they're growing up. If we find a particularly competent UTC student, and that student graduates, maybe he could become part of the quality team here. We also want to increase our engagement with UT residents here, medicine, surgery, all of them, to enhance our capabilities, again, using them as relatively cheap labor to help us with some of these projects. More importantly, these young physicians have got to understand this issue of quality, which was never talked about with me 35 years ago, is now clearly part of our language and the way we need to practice medicine. Finally, and probably most importantly, we've got to really engage the nurses. The nurses are probably our most valuable asset in changing the culture, and, boy, we've got a culture here that needs some changing. The nurses are also probably the secret to sustained success. So we hope to, over time, really engage the nurses, get them involved in these projects, have them tell us where change needs to occur, and use them now and in the future. Finally, we've got to engage you men and women. We've got to engage you all in this concept of quality is important, improving is important. It's going to, in the future, depend how we're paid. More importantly, it's going to depend on our patients, how they do, how they see our hospital. It's the way, it's the way of the future, and it's the way it needs to be. We're going to need your help. So we've done a few things so far. Again, it's last month. I want to extend my deepest thanks to Woods for his mentorship. He's teaching me how to do this, because I didn't do this a month ago. Couple of quick projects. I have adopted North Wing Eight as a personal floor. Talk with Pam Sharitz this afternoon, Jan, and we've been up there, I went up there and said, "What do you need?" And she said, "We need this, 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 this." Went to Jan, she said, "You have, you can have this, 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 and this." We've been working with them, we've been working with environmental services, dietary. They're new, they're enthusiastic, they're on board, and I'm hoping that I'll be able to, in the next three to six, eight months, improve the patient satisfaction scores. That's, that's what I'm passionate about, is patient satisfaction. We've also done a lot of work getting prepared for the upcoming flu season and implementing a nurse-driven protocol. Let me say that again, a nurse-driven protocol. That's what worked with urinary tract infections, to increase our influenza vaccination rate to superb levels. So I'll stop there, and I'll, white, white question mark. Hmm. I didn't put that in there. Anyway, any questions from the board? Any questions I can answer? Yes, sir?
No.
I just wanted to follow up on the influenza. What is a superb rate?
You've actually got the metrics in your package. I think we're shooting for something like 95 or 96 percent. And that, and that, that means the patient is offered the vaccine.
Yep.
The patient can refuse it, but we've got to document the patient was asked and either refused, or he got, or he, or he, or she got the vaccine.
Thank you.
And the specific metrics, I don't have them memorized during your package.
Patient safeties, satisf, I mean, patient satisfaction versus H cap, is that the same?
Patient satisfaction is a more general term than H caps. H caps is a specific metric developed by Medicare CMS for Medicare patients. We use a firm called PRC that does a very similar test on all patients. In other words, H caps is really just Medicare patients, but PRC is a consulting firm that we contract with that contacts every patient.
And it's the H cap that determines our reimbursement.
Incentive.
For Medicare only.
Correct.
We're, we're going to get that one up.
Okay.
Yep.
But that's part of the, as, when you may recall, we're talking with the budget, we're talking about those quality penalties and stuff. That's exactly what Dr. Kofler's talking about.
You've heard the terminology value-based purchasing is part of the value-based purchasing.
H caps are also available to the public. PRC scores are ours, but the H caps is what the public can see if they go on the internet.
Sorry, but presumably if PRC scores move, H cap scores would move since you're capturing the Medicare population.
Correct. Yes, sir.
As you look at this, and this is a big task, this is something that's very important to the hospital, how long are you thinking it's going to take to see movement? Is this something that's going to move, you know, next quarter? Or this is, I know this is a long-term project, but when, when do you expect to start seeing, you know, results in the numbers?
Well, first off, let me point out that Woods Blake has already been moving it.
Sure.
We've been moving.
Right.
We've been improving. But I would hope that we can show improvement within six months, fully aware I may be boxing myself in, that we ought to be able to make a difference within six months. Some of the things we're doing now are really superb, but my passion is patient satisfaction, and I think we can move that. I showed a, I shared a one-week survey with the joint conference that showed, at least on one floor, we had always, already significantly improved there. So I think we can do it. It's just a matter of developing the methods on my floor, and Jan Keys has adopted 3,000 as her floor, and we're going to try to develop the best practices that work for us here and then use those to roll out to other floors. Already, other nursing floors know about this, and they hear about this. Dr. Keys and I have been rounding, we rounded the day in the ER. We've been rounding on different floors, just going around talking to nurses, making sure they know that we're, we've got their backs, asking patients, we, we go into patients' rooms and just talk to the patients, and how's, what's been good, what's been bad. Those sorts of techniques are well-defined metrics that have been shown definitely to improve patient satisfaction scores in other institutions. This is not rocket science.
Yeah. Mr. Spiegel. Yeah, I think that our movement is really terrific, but if you look at some of the reportable scores, it's an amalgam of three years, and it may be either six months to a year in arrears. So to start moving those things, with Dr. Kofler and Dr. Blake, they're getting more current data, and our current data, there is a dramatic improvement in our current scores, but it's going to take time, those other years to drop off and replace with much stronger years that we're experiencing right now. And I do believe that, that all this effort in having Dr. Woods Blake move from part-time to full-time, and Dr. Joe Kofler now full-time in quality, we're going, I'm going to talk a little bit about the chief medical officer, and also, remember, we have that administrator position that we're also going to hire for the quality department. So our effort in not only making the department of quality a real department, it's given the infrastructure to take the hospital quality and take it to the next level.
Dr. Kofler, I can tell you, three years ago, the hot topic in the boardroom was financial. Today, the hot topic is quality, so we, you do have a lot of cheerleaders with trustees here, so thank you.
Well, good. I appreciate that. It's, it's my passion.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Spiegel.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. If I can get some assistance in putting my slides up, I will hopefully knock it out of the park. But what I'm going to do, so, we're going to be filming this, so all the employees are going to be able to hear this report on our intranet, and this is a really good thing, I think, for the hospital to get up-to-date information. But I'm going to do the state of the health system for last fiscal year. Which one do I point? No?
They turned on the side.
Oh, okay. There you go. Sorry about that, folks. Our major accomplishments this year, financially, it's a record-breaking year. It's actually the best performance Erlanger has had in its history. We've reorganized our management and really brought in and found the talent here, but based on accountability and responsibility on performance and metrics. From a strategy standpoint, we've developed a real intense strategic plan, but I think what's really special about this team is that our ability to execute on these strategies and timely. Our physician relationships have improved dramatically, and that's measured by, I believe, two things, the attendance of the quarterly staff meetings and the amount of admissions that our community-based physicians are bringing to the hospital. Operations, we really did two things. We really grew the top line of our business. At the same time, we're becoming more cost-effective, and cost-containment strategies have been implemented. And our investments in the infrastructure here at Erlanger for the IT system and medical equipment and the recapitalization, which I'm going to get into in more detail, was really one of our major successes and achievements this past year. In summary, we've had robust volume growth. All, overall admissions were up 9 percent, and our commercial discharges were up 12 percent. Inpatient surgical volumes were up 8 percent. Inpatient orthopedic surgeries were up 15 percent. Inpatient neurosurgery was up 19 percent. Our cardiac and open-heart procedures were up 22 percent. And when Dr. Singh brought me a new proposal to, and we brought it before this committee, the replacement of the new DaVinci robots to the new state-of-the-art single-port systems that were also teaching consoles for our teaching residents, it's up a record-breaking 52 percent. Cardiac procedures overall up 40 percent. Neonatal patient days up 20 percent. Erlanger physician practices are overall up 25 percent, and our emergency department up 10 percent. That's pretty dramatic growth for this health system. On the financial side, if you look and scan over the last couple of years, this year, I'm proud to report, we finished the year a bottom-bottom line of $37.3 million. That is the best year from bottom-bottom line that we have had in the history of the hospital. At the same time that we're in, making investments in the infrastructure, we also have improved, one of the Wall Street metrics is our days of cash on hand, and we have improved that from 65 days to 106 days. We still have work to go on this metric, but, but it is a dramatic improvement. Paid FTEs per adjusted occupied bed, although we've added 300 new jobs, we actually have become more productive, and our FTEs per adjusted occupied bed is probably about 4.7. And that is a dramatic improvement over previous operating margins. We, I, I mentioned earlier that we've added 300 new positions, and we've increased our nursing salaries, a total of 5.4 million, so reinvesting into our workforce, and our nursing salaries are at market for the first time in, in a very, very long time. And how we actually know that is we did a nurse recruitment. Dr. Keys and her team were extremely effective in recruiting over 250 new nurses, and some of those nurses have left other hospitals and said that they were making more money here with that job change. So that's how we actually know, other than our data, but we're getting it directly from the nurses that we're hiring. Unbudgeted raises for non-nursing employees invested 2.4 million, and we're going to be hiring, in the process of hiring, 100 new jobs in the IT sector. And, and that's going to be really very difficult to recruit top talent. We're working with UTC and others so that we're able to fill that 100 new jobs. On top of that 100, Epic is going to come to Chattanooga with about another 100 employees staying in the hotels, eating in our restaurants, and we're now approaching $3 billion as an economic impact to this community. And fund 80 new residents and fellows. Good. Executed on tactics, I'm not going to go over exactly, but I think what's different about this team is that we're able to execute on things, and when Britt and I went to Wall Street last year, one of the things that they were most impressed about is our ability to execute on what we, which we talked about. Dr. Woods Blake and Dr. Kofler really talked about our successes and what we already have done, but I just really want to bring to your attention that we've improved our quality rates by 31 percent, improved our CLAPSE rates by 11.5 percent. These are really unbelievable improvements in our practices, and we performed at top decile for the patient safety indicators, as well as sustained growth in early-term deliveries. And we decreased mortality, and as you know, we had a presentation here on sepsis, we've decreased our mortality with sepsis patient because we're recognizing things earlier at the emergency department. And we sustained extremely low readmission rates, and the establishment of Dr. Kofler and Dr. Woods Blake as well. We've had a tremendous amount of certifications this year. This was a very difficult year with joint commission and a lot of accreditations coming here and reviewing this hospital, but one of the things I do want, and I know we had a presentation, but we are the first baby-friendly hospital in the state of Tennessee, and that was a very large, and congratulations to the team, but we really, we also, on our metabolic and bariatric program, received national accreditation. The trauma team, again, is, is surveyed in Tennessee and Alabama through their accreditation programs. It was really an unbelievable year, and we did all these accreditations with flying colors. Want to talk a little bit about our capital investment and our strategic growth. Britt Taber and I went to Wall Street. This was a tremendous, tremendous accomplishment of really talking about bringing additional funds into Chattanooga. We brought in additional, other than bringing our, our rates down, we were able to bring in an additional 71 million into new monies. 50 million is going into the east expansion, creating from 43 beds to 107 beds, and a new diagnostic center and cardiac cath lab as well. The first phase of the children's hospital for, it's the ambulatory center, that's 11, 11.5 million of a project that's going to cost us about 35 million. In addition to that, the new vascular operating rooms that, and orthopedic units, an additional 9.5 million, which totals about 71 million into new, and then you add in our routine capital of 25 million, so that, that's an unbelievable year of $96 million in, in the reinvestment, and that does not include the $100 million in the Epic project that we've committed to. So, I mean, the, the investments here, the technology that we're placing has been really terrific, and we continue this year's equipment and technology upgrades throughout the hospital. The EROC Center is one of those pretty dramatic things that, if you want to actually see it again, it's, it's my pleasure, the physician's lounge in the operating room, the orthopedic center of excellence with the operating rooms is under construction, the new Starbucks, which is one of the largest Starbucks in east Tennessee, and our three Tesla magnet, not even talking about our PET scanner. I mean, we've really reinvested into state-of-the-art technology. The east project is a $50 million project. It includes four new operating rooms, pre and post areas, an interventional cardiac unit, as well as interventional radiology, so that when we do patients here acutely, if we want to do elective neuroprocedures, we could actually do them at east as well. New physician-on-call lounges, six postpartum beds, and I think one of the things they, they are most happy about is that the new on-call area, it's not the trailer in front of the hospital. So, those are the things that are important to people. We're now expanding the project, as we talked to this group about putting a linear accelerator and, and have a CON for that. We're looking at single rooms in the NICU, and now Britt and I are working on, with Bruce and others, for a medical office building with an imaging center there as well. It's under construction. It's moving extremely well, and we haven't caused any traffic problems that I know about. The areas of strategic growth really focus around the EROC Center, which, which makes it easy for the regional hospitals to send those patients. And, you know, our specialties that we only offer in this region at Erlanger, which is pretty incredible. And our auto-accept policy, which helped make it easy for the hospitals with critically ill patients that need a higher level of care, have smooth transition, where we can coordinate it with either air or ground transportation with one phone call. And we've also, if you look at the admission growth from, that have been coming in, and you look at the insurance, it's, the commercial insurance is, is what's really have seen dramatic improvements, as well as Medicare. The footprint of our regions, we, we kind of break it up into different regions, and that's where we put our helicopters. And we have now five helicopters, so we've increased our footprint of our air ambulance force, and we've now actually relocated our helicopter into Cleveland. So we're in the middle, and we're kind of surrounded with the helicopters bringing patients to Erlanger, and it's probably the safest in working with our helicopter partner. This has really dramatically improved our response times and the service to this region. As we look at primary care, and, and people have talked to me even prior to me coming to Erlanger about infrastructure with our, both employed docs and our primary care, we have moved from 120 employed doctors to 192 docs and growing. Our primary care was, went from 27 doctors to 59 doctors in areas throughout the greater Chattanooga area. Technology, this is our biggest leap forward, that we made a decision to move forward with Epic. We, we comprised a group of physicians and administrators to come in and look at all the systems. The physician committee came back with an overwhelming recommendation for us to move forward with Epic, as it's the number-one system in the world right now. Be careful what you wish for, you may get it. It comes with challenges of totally re-engineering the way we care for our patients. And talk about quality, it's a way for us to really understand data in a And talk about quality, it's a way for us to really understand data in a dramatic improvement, and really start looking at population health in this entire region. And it will have a component, we'll also offer community-based docs, the ability to also be on our EMR system as well. Zocdoc is another thing that is transforming the way we are seen as state-of-the-art, as you have the ability to use your PDA to make appointments with doctors right online. You don't have to make a call. Mrs. Stanley just has the download.
Sorry, I love that. I was showing it to Jack.
Download of the app. I have it.
I booked something yesterday.
I have it. I mean, it is unbelievable. We, you know, do a lot of things online in Chattanooga. You could, you don't have to put money in the meter, you could just use the parking app, you could use OpenTable for reservations. And now you can use your device to make your doctor's appointment. And it's been dramatically accepted. And it's one of those things that was difficult in the beginning, but it's going to get better and better. If you start looking at Erlanger, local, regional, and statewide, we made the Delta Magazine, and everybody's been texting me about pictures when they see the article in there. And Laurie Sargent was also on the Doctor Show, putting Erlanger into the national spotlight. The most significant in the history of our hospital is when the article in the New England Journal of Medicine came out definitively looking at TPA versus intervention. Dr. Blaise Baxter and the entire team of Tom Devlin and all the neurologists, neurosurgeons, and an interventional neuroradiologists really made international news when that article broke. And hopefully you'll hear more about it, but if you actually see them, say hello and kind of congratulate them, because it put Chattanooga on the map on an international medical level. Some challenges on a go-forward basis that we're going to have to continue this and sustain this growth is exactly that, is we need to continue to manage our growth and manage our capital expenditure. I mean, we're embarking on huge projects, both with Epic and with the East construction and all these constructions. And how do you really kind of do all of this and land the plane all at the same time? And I think managing this next year or two is probably going to be the most challenging year in the history of Erlanger to manage all this growth at all the same time. Erlanger, as well as every other hospital in the state of Tennessee, is challenged with the lack of expansion of Medicaid in our state. CMS is scrutinizing, a lot of states that have not. And there has been a decision in Florida where the central access payments were eliminated, and they settled in a lawsuit with CMS for 50% of those monies. So this is going to be a very challenging time for us in the future. Value-based purchasing, Medicaid and commercial-looking, and payer consolidation should get everybody concerned, as there are going to be less payers out there. And what is that going to do to you as a consumer, the rates? But for hospitals and payments, it's going to be extremely difficult on a go-forward basis. But we do have an aligned vision. This is a time where I can actually thank our board members for your counsel and advice nonstop. I don't think there's a board member that didn't call me back and give me their opinion or give me their advice on issues. And I think that's what made this year so special, is aligned things. The physicians, Dr. Kern, the advice from the Medical Executive Committee, and the leadership of the Medical Executive Committee has been second to none. We do have a robust plan going forward, and, you know, I think that one of the things I'm confident about is this administrative team with their seamless execution. And although we kind of go over every single project to detail on Monday mornings, but it's those meetings that really, we bring up hard issues and we deal with hard issues. And we're really, I'm really confident that we're going to be able to take on. You know, this did lead to a $60 million turnaround. And it couldn't have been done without the support of both the board and the physicians at this hospital. And we do have a overwhelming momentum. And, you know, when we have our quarterly medical staff meetings, which probably, I use that word quarterly, but we probably only meet twice a year. But the overwhelming physicians in this community come there and give their input, and I couldn't be any more grateful for them. There was a time this year that it really showed how wonderful it was for this hospital to come together for this community, that we were on the map worldwide about the response, not only the trauma team, but the emergency department and nurses, our relationship with the police department and the sheriff's department and the SWAT team. My gratitude for our nurses and doctors who serve on SWAT to help protect this community and be an absolute resource to every single person in this entire region. I think if you do something and it turns out pretty good, then you should go do something else wonderful, not dwell on it for too long, just figure out what's next. And Steve Jobs made an impact on my life, and I'm glad to share that with you. And we got to now figure out how we do next year. Going to share a video that we produced about things we do at Erlanger. Hope you enjoy it. I broke it. It's okay. Are we going to have to reboot it? Maybe we can, yeah, we're going to pass on the video. Sorry for the technical. But I just, before I, and I just really want to let everybody know, we have selected the Chief Medical Officer. There was a search committee, and Dr. Dan Fisher was chairman of that search committee. I want to thank everybody who's served on the search committee. We selected Dr. William Jackson. Dr. Jackson is currently the Chief Medical Officer of Alexandria Hospital at Inova Healthcare System in Virginia. He's board certified in internal medicine and critical care medicine, and he's served several roles, practicing as an intensivist at Inova Fairfax Hospital, which is an 833-bed tertiary facility in Virginia. He's also the head of Inova's Telemedicine Institute, and that's both at Fairfax and Alexandria Hospital. He also has an MBA, and he trained at Tulane Medical School, and postgraduate education in the Armed Forces at Walter Reed Army Hospital in Washington. His dark date is?
December 1.
December 1, and we're going to release all this information, but I thought it was important to let the board know before this goes out.
Mr. Chairman, that is my report.
Very good. Thank you very much. Very impressive year. Moving on down the agenda, let's see. Kitty, did we review, did we approve the minutes, or?
We did.
We did?
Yeah, did we do it backwards?
Yeah. I think we did it backwards. You missed it?
I seconded it.
All right. We'll move on to our committee reports, Budget, Finance. Mr. Stoudt.
We did meet, and we have, I believe, three items on the agenda.
Very good. Joint Conference?
No report.
But you did meet this month?
Yes.
And, which I need to remind our trustees, after the open meeting here, we will have a closed meeting for credentialing up in the boardroom. So don't run off, we need to do that. Planning Committee?
We did not meet.
Audit and Compliance?
We did not meet.
Legal, I don't think.
We met this month.
Did not meet. Management Board Evaluation?
We met a lot. We met twice this month, and once on September 10th. And we, coming out of that open meeting, we have action, potential actions before the board tonight. We also met earlier today, and no action resulting from that for the board this evening.
Very good. And I don't think our Personnel Committee met during the month.
No.
You have under New Business your consent calendar. And again, it has one resolution on it coming out of Budget and Finance. You had it in your package. Do I hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Mr. Gentry, Resolution 150902.
Good evening. I have the distinct pleasure of presenting a resolution for our employees, our great employees, our professional, our competent employees to receive a bonus, a discretionary bonus this year. We did have a very strong year during fiscal year 2015, and we believe a strong year such as we had, we need to give back, we need to share with our, with our great employees. And with that, we're before you today requesting that you approve a bonus of $400 for all eligible employees, and eligible employees would consider all regular, full-time, regular part-time employees that were hired prior to January the 1st, 2015. Managers that participated in incentive plan would not be eligible, and also physicians would not be eligible for the $400. Additionally, we're trying to move to an organization and a system of accountability in those employees, and fortunately, we do not have many, but those employees under disciplinary action at the probationary level would not be eligible to participate, and they would not receive the $400 bonus. This resolution has moved through Management Board Evaluation Committee, on through Budget and Finance, and now before you this evening for approval. I'd be glad to address or answer any questions you have.
Anyone have any questions? I know we talked about this Monday night, the Atlanta and Budget and Finance, so a lot of your questions were already answered there, but.
Maybe it's a question, maybe more of a comment from some of the previous conversation at the committee meetings where we discussed it. But I think it's important to note, the flat bonus structure of this year, the $400, is a great thing, and that's a, I'm a proponent of this. I think the efforts to move to something that's a little bit more performance-based or incentive-based will obviously take more time to come up with that plan, but I think that's time well spent. So I would just sort of reiterate, let's make sure we move on to a slightly elevated plan for next year, if we have success again next year.
Thank you.
Mr. Charles?
I've got a comment.
Will you go ahead and make your comment?
Chattanooga has got a lot of good businesses that award their employees and support their employees and the success of the business. And I'm very glad that Erlanger is in a position this year to do something like that. But what I really would like to see is a more substantial plan put in place that was just mentioned a minute ago. And so I just hope that the management team can work harder on trying to put together a plan, can work all employees to be involved in something like this. Something that would be a little more substantial, a little more meaningful.
Rick, I don't have a question, I'd like to just make a statement. I'm thankful, very thankful for the management team here at Erlanger and for Kevin, who's, who got together to make the decision to do this. I know oftentimes we don't really remember, some of us don't really remember what it was like to struggle. There are a lot of people here who work at Erlanger who struggle, there are a lot of people in this city who struggle. And I remember going through law school, I remember what that felt like. And so to be able to share in some of the financial reward that Erlanger has worked so hard for over the last year, to be able to share that with the people who work here, and to truly be able to bless people who are out there working hard every day, to be able to receive something like this may not seem like a lot to a lot of people. But believe me, for the people who work here hard every day, it means a lot. It may mean people being able to keep lights on, or groceries, or sending money to a kid in school. It means a lot. And so I'm just very thankful for the management team and Kevin, for your leadership and your direction in helping that happen.
Thank you, Carol.
Very good. Any other questions, comments? Not all entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
I've got a lot of. Everybody wants credit for this resolution.
Go for it, Nita.
Nita's first, and Dr. Ruth Miller's second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, right here. Because it was on the consent calendar, I missed it, but that involves a line of credit that involves Mike Griffin's bank where he is employed. He seconded that motion, and.
And that's a violation.
Well, it should, we should correct that.
Let me do this, then. Let me, since you, I'm very seldom called out of order by our legal counsel, so I want to.
I'm so sorry.
No, I'm glad that's your job. I think this is the first time you've ever done that. Now, let me explain, on the consent calendar, we did, Britt, why don't you just go ahead and tell a little bit about our line of credit that we.
We, there's a $24 million line of credit. This is for two purposes and two purposes only. As we know, the ICD-10 new coding starts October 1. And so there's a lot of speculation out in the industry that this could delay cash receipts for multiple weeks. And so this is sort of like our insurance plan, in case that happens. We will eventually get the cash, but we have done significant testing within the organization. We feel fairly confident that we're ready, but once that bill leaves our hands and goes through multiple clearinghouses and payers, we're not so sure that everyone else is ready, and the federal government as well. So this is sort of our insurance, we would only draw on that just in case that happens. And then the second time we would draw on this is with the Epic implementation. As we go live, as you know, that they could be minor hiccups as well. And so this particular line of credit would be used for those two purposes and those two purposes only. We did bid it, we got five different proposals. The First Tennessee Bank was by far the best proposal on the interest, on the, if we decided to draw it down, as well as the unused fee of that line of credit. So I would recommend moving forward with this. And again, if we draw on that line of credit, the board would be duly notified as well. But this is just our insurance policy to ensure that that does not happen.
And since Mr. Griffin's bank was the low bidder.
Yes.
And best terms, I will ask for a, let's vote on this again, and Mr. Griffin, I'll ask you to abstain if that's all right.
I will abstain, but I do like the nice publicity you gave.
Very good. So I will entertain a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Could you tell us who the other banks were?
I sure can. We had First Tennessee, Inovus, SunTrust, Phil Third, and Bank of America.
Any other questions? Motion for approval?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm staying, Mr. Griffin.
Thank you.
Mr. Witter, thank you very much. I didn't recognize that voice when I heard it. Like I said, you never called me out before. Ms. Stanley?
Thank you. I have two resolutions tonight, but I will be helped by Jose Paguaga, who's our senior partner with Sullivan Carter. They work with us, they're executive compensation and evaluation consultants based nationwide. Jose works out of their Atlanta office. And we'll basically take this in a tag team. We'll start with the first resolution, 150903, and Jose will share the results of the fiscal year 2015 incentive plan, and then I'll say a few words, and we'll move into discussion and voting, and then we'll repeat that same pattern for the next resolution.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would, I have a conflict of interest, I'll step out until this discussion is over.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Welcome, thank you.
Well, thank you, Jennifer, and good evening. I am glad to be back in Chattanooga. I think this time under, shall we say, lighter and perhaps more favorable circumstances than the last time I was here. I'm not sure how long I'm going to go, but I don't think I'm going to go two and a half hours like I did last time. I'm sure no one in this, no one in this hall will object. The first action in front of the board is to approve the fiscal year 15 Management Incentive Compensation Plan. I'll remind you that this is a board-approved plan that was approved earlier in the year. So everything that is here was already pre-established from, in terms of the goals, as are the financial implications. So the only, the only new variable here is the performance of the organization against those goals and the subsequent payouts. I'll remind you again that the board has approved all aspects of this management incentive plan and remind you that this is a one-tie lump sum amount that would be paid to individuals based on goals established by the board. And so based on that, in this year's plan, there are 124 executives, directors, and managers who are eligible for a payout under the plan. The value of the compensation is established by the plan and expressed as percentages of salary, okay? These percentages are in place and have been in place since the plan last year. And these assume that if, for example, all the goals are achieved at the target level, these would be the percentages that would be applied to the individual's base salary. Again, that is established by the plan and there is no discretion. Also established by the plan are the goals upon which the incentive compensation would be based. As you can see, there are goals established by unit, okay? Forty percent of the goal is a financial goal in all the units with the exception of Bledsoe, which I'll explain in a moment. Sixty percent are quality goals, which relate to quality in essence, three areas, if you will. One are metrics related to service, H-CAPS, which you heard Dr. Kofur speak about, patients, metrics related to a patient safety indicator, metrics related to hospital-acquired infections, cauti and clapsy, which you heard Kevin speak to, a metric related to length of stay in the ED, which is ostensibly a service metric, and then a metric that you also heard about, which is related to sepsis mortality. And so these represent 60% of the incentive, the financial represents 40% of the incentive. It is based on the net operating income and for the layperson, that means the amount of actual revenue over expenses or in the general industry, what would be referred to as operating income or operating profit. Bledsoe is the exception, they're based solely on 100% operating income and that's simply because currently, Bledsoe does not have the infrastructure to measure these types of quality indicators. So let me share with you the performance results based on each of the entities. And so what you will see is that with respect to the net operating margin, Corporate Baroness, Children's, and Bledsoe all reached the stretch level, okay? So that is the highest level of performance that could be achieved under the plan, a level of performance that would have a very low probability, okay? So this is outstanding performance in these four units. East and North established their operating performance at the threshold level. So this is very much in line with the report that you heard from Kevin with respect to the financial performance and the financial strength of Erlanger. As you then, if I could draw your attention then to the service metrics, which are represented by Service Excellence, which again are the H-CAPS and the PRC metrics that Dr. Kofur referred to, as well as length of stay in ED, you'll see that these are in the red, meaning that the performance did not, was not achieved at a high enough level where they were in the money. Now, having said that, I want to be careful that this is not interpreted as necessarily as, as poor quality, okay? As Kevin reported, there were improvements, but because this is an incentive plan and the expectation is that performance, even at the entry level, at the threshold level, would improve upon the prior year, in these instances, they did not, they did not improve enough, okay? And so as you look at the combination of patient safety, hospital-acquired infections as cauti and clapsy, as well as sepsis mortality, you will see that it is a mixed bag. You have clapsy and sepsis at target and you have cauti at the threshold level, okay? And so if you step back and you say, what does this mean? I think, I think the picture, at least in my mind, is very clear. So very healthy, very strong financial performance, improvements in quality areas, but not at the same level of financial performance, okay? What you should note is that the best healthcare systems, okay, do all this extremely well, okay? They don't accept service and patient safety issues to not, not be achieved at the same level because, in fairness, many of these are volume-related, okay? So as you grow volume, it's harder to maintain. The best healthcare systems don't accept a trade-off in these areas. So let's talk about what that performance is worth to the individuals and to Erlanger. And so I'll share with you the financial equation that was established by the board at the outset of the plan, okay? So let's start out here. You've earned on an excess revenue of expenses basis about $40 million. This is a slightly different number than what Kevin reported to you because this is the number before any incentives were paid, okay? And so if you net out the incentives, you end up with where Kevin was at about 37.6. So the way the arrangement was set up is that the first about $11 million, 10.9 to be exact, the first 10.9 of excess revenue goes to and is retained by Erlanger Health System, okay? In essence, the next, the next 3.4 of that goes to fund the incentive plan, okay? And so what happened here is because the financial performance was so strong, you funded a plan that would pay out at $3.4 million. But because you didn't achieve all the goals at the stretch level, you are in fact only paying out $2.1 million, okay? And you're giving back 1.3 million, okay? And everything above $15 million comes back to the institution, okay? So the first 11 and everything above, and everything above 15, okay? So if you run out, if you run out the formulas and how that translates to the individuals, your president and CEO earned an incentive compensation payout of just under, slightly under $245,000, which represents about 94% of what he would have earned had he achieved all those goals at targets, okay? What you'll see is the distribution is 94% across the board. You'll see variation, Bledsoe is the relative winner. Again, theirs is exclusively financially based and because of the stretch performance, those managers in Bledsoe have fared fairly well. Conversely, at East, because the financial performance was at the threshold level and that counts 40%, their earnings on a relative basis is going to be lower than the rest. So let's, let me just close this section by covering the economics just so that they're clear. Actual expenses, excuse me, excess revenue over expenses of $39.6 million. The first $200,000 is carved out for employee recognition. You funded a pool of 3.4, you paid out 2.1, you got back 1.3, and you netted $37,003. So for every $1 of incentive compensation that you paid, you took in $18 back to the healthcare system, okay? There's no magic here, this is not after the fact, this was the formula, okay? This is just the relationship of, in effect, what management has earned by the performance that they've delivered. So I'll stop there and see if there are any questions.
Jose, in the, here on the percent of target, target is not the highest level.
It is not.
Stretch is the highest.
Yes.
So that's why you see Bledsoe?
That's correct.
At 150%.
The plan is...
So if everybody had hit stretch across the board, we would have been at the 3.4?
That's correct.
And everybody, everything on the right-hand column would have been 150?
That is correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure I'm understanding.
Jose, is it normal to have metrics that are criteria that run counter to each other? Like if your volumes increase, like our volumes really increased, which drives up length of stay? So with volumes increasing, our financial performance increases, but that's counterproductive to length of stay?
The tension is what makes this work, Donnie, right? Because otherwise, if you don't have the tension, you run the risk of overemphasizing one to the, to the expense of the other, okay? And it only appears to be a tension because of where you've come from and what you've had to emphasize.
But you said earlier, they should all be, your goal is for all of them to be...
That's right.
Targets.
Right. But what did you have to do as a board and as a management team? You had to stabilize the financial condition of Erlanger.
And now we look at quality and patient safety.
And that's, that's why the weight was, was so significant, okay? And so, which I'll leave with two observations. One, this is a very powerful tool, okay? I'm not going to go so far as to say that there is a cause-effect relationship, okay? But they certainly are related, okay? You emphasize a financial turnaround, you put quality metrics in there and you get, and you get improvement. So that's the first point. The second point is ostensibly, we're here to approve a payout, okay? That's what the story will be. I'll just ask you to, to consider what this really represents, this kind of financial performance, what it represents for the people that Erlanger is significant to. You've protected jobs, you've protected wages, you've protected benefits, you've just done a sizable employee bonus. You've heard about Kevin's investments in caregivers and in medical technology. And so when this is a strong, financially viable institution, everybody wins. Patients win and the citizens of this community win, okay? And, and as you think about this, I just say to you, don't let that part of the story get lost because that's the other side. That's the other side of this experience.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, if it's all right with you, since Jose will be presenting again, oh, you have another question?
No, I was just...
Since he'll be presenting again, I'll just, I'll just speak from here so we don't have to run back and forth and him come back, him come back up. So I'd like to present before the board for your consideration, passage of Resolution 150902, which authorizes the payout of the $2.1 million in, in the Management Incentive Plan. I would like to remind the board of two things. Number one, we have to vote on it by virtue of the value of the dollars at stake. We are not required in our bylaws to vote on anything related to a management incentive plan per se, so that is why we need to take this action. Second, even though we are not required by our bylaws to be as involved as we are in the development of the Management Incentive Plan, we have together with the management team decided that it's in everyone's best interest that the board be actively involved in shaping what those metrics look like. We've worked closely with Jose and his firm, for which we are very thankful to understand what happens in the market so that we can use objective facts to benchmark other plans against. So we're going above and beyond as a board by being this heavily involved, but I think that's a good thing for Erlanger.
So do we need to go ahead and vote on Resolution 150902 at this time?
Oh, 03, 03, 03, sorry.
Are we waiting to...
No, no, we can vote on them separately. We should vote on them separately, they're separate actions.
Very good. At this time, I will entertain a motion for approval of Resolution 150903.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
Have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Thank you. Now we'll move on.
Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to just ask, last year when we did this, the payout was broken down into two parts. Is it anticipated that the payment would be broken down into two parts this year?
No, this will be one, one payment, yes.
Okay. Shall we move on to the 2016 Incentive Plan, which Jose again will take us through what we are looking at for this fiscal year in terms of incentives? Before, before, before Jose starts, the one thing I do want the board to understand is that you may recognize the calendar for these discussions is quite different. There have been times and years past where we all knew what the incentive plan was for the fiscal year, but the board hadn't actually taken action on it until closer to the end of the fiscal year, which is just bad practice, quite frankly. So we have made an effort to rein that in and wait till the end, a little bit after the end of the previous fiscal year, so that we have audited financials to inform the upcoming year's plan before we vote on it. So this is the first year, I think, in a very long time that we are finally on a calendar that makes sense. So thank you, everyone, for doing that.
Yeah, so before I share with you the proposed goals, let me just spend a second on the process. So the goals that are being presented here were developed by management. They were presented to me for review. I am the board's consultant, not management's consultant. So one of the things that I need to do is to look at it from an objective perspective to assure that what is being proposed as a goal level is in fact incentive-worthy. And so I'm looking at the relationship between the baseline and the target, the relationship between the baseline and the stretch, as well as the threshold. That then gets presented to the Management Board and Evaluation Committee, who goes through an exhaustive discussion and vetting of the goals. So that's the process that's taken place before the presentation today. This plan will be very similarly structured. There are some changes. The changes are, I think, on the margin and there's certainly clearly some changes on the goals that are before you. And so the proposed participants in this year's plan is 152, and I believe that's about 18 more than last year. I think that just represents new positions that go along with the growth of Erlanger. The economics on an individual basis are unchanged at all levels, so the same amount that any one individual can earn under the 14 plan, excuse me, under the 15 plan is what they can earn under the 16 plan. The goals have not changed significantly in terms of the category. I will point out that net operating income is now 45% of the total, as opposed to 40. Bledsoe continues at 100%. The balance is in the quality goal area. You will recognize a number of these, service H-CAPS is still in, the Patient Safety Index is still in, cauti, clapsy, influence of vaccine is in, consistent with the direction outlined by Dr. Kofur. And hand hygiene, which has been a measure in the past, comes back in as a metric and I think the rationale, and I won't speak for the quality folks, but I think the rationale is that this is a predictive indicator, okay, of hospital-acquired infections, okay? And so I think management believes that these are important, okay? And so that's the, that's the structure of the, of the goals. What I'll share with you, and I have one of these for each of the entities, but I'll share some of the highlights. So on the financial metric, the budget, to be in the money means you're achieving the budget, which has been approved by the Finance Committee, okay? To hit the target level, you have to do 10% better, okay? And you have to do 20% better on the upside. All these other metrics that relate to service, as well as quality and patient safety, at the threshold level, you will recognize that there is an improvement from the baseline. So for example, on Service Excellence and H-CAPS measure, where this is 22% of the points earned, okay, this is where you finish the fiscal 15, just to get in the money, you've got to get to 30, okay? So there's this consistent theme that just to get in the money means that you have to improve, okay? So there's no, there's no easy money here, if I may, if I may use those terms, okay? I won't spend a whole lot of time, but I'll just show you to evidence... I won't spend a whole lot of time, but I'll just show you to evidence that each of these institutions has the same, has the same kind of structure, each of the units. Children's as well, you'll see the same metrics. Again, you'll see, you'll see the improvements. Big move, for example, of children's on CLAPSE from 1.6 to, to 1.0. Same kind of movement, service excellence from 63.5 to 65.6. So, East and North, same as well, as well as Bledsoe. So, the economics work sort of the same way, except the numbers are different. Under this year's, because the budget is, is, is stronger on an, on an excess revenue basis, the first 18.7 million revert to Erlanger, okay? Anything above that, to the maximum funding, so the next 4.1, go into the pool. It's, again, likely that they're not going to earn this entirely, okay? If they do, then you ought to be asking me if I were doing, if I was doing my job on your behalf, because the goals may have been too easy, okay? So, there always will be some level of give-back. And then, if you earn anywhere close to what you did this year, anything above the 22A reverts back to the system. So, from a financial standpoint, I think it's hard, a reasonable person would think it would be hard-pressed to really argue the, you know, the fairness and, and the ratio between what you would pay out relative to what, to what you would net. So, with that, I'll have you to take any questions.
Can I add a couple of points before questions, because I think I, I know which ones to anticipate based on MBEC. First, you may have, folks may have a question after our discussion around the board being really focused on quality this year. Why we moved up the balance on financial to 45% of total, and we moved down from 60% of the balance on quality indicators to 55. There's really two reasons driving this, but we think we're still going to get to the same end state. Reason number one is we didn't want to let up on finances after a banner year, which can be very easy to do. So, continuing to keep, keep the focus on that is quite important, particularly in light of Kevin's comments about the complexity of all the projects we have going on and the cost of the projects we have going on. Second, when you actually look at the quality metrics, I might, you know, posit that the ones that we have this year are actually more indicative of things that you'd want to see move, that have a one-to-one relationship with patient health, and are therefore make a better reflection of the quality in the hospital than something like length of stay. So, while length of stay in the ED certainly impacts the patient experience, having hand hygiene in, and having the, the influenza vaccine metrics in there, those are directly related to patient, the actual health of the patient. And so, when we thought about what are all of the quality metrics combined, we thought we had a strong enough combination that the 45-55 split was worth it.
And I'll add to that, the, the financial strain that Epic is going to put on our system in the next two years, because it's front-loaded, is it first three years or two years? First three years. The bulk of the outflow comes in the first three years.
Yes.
And I'll take that a step further and say, even though we've done the prudent thing in putting a facility in place, anybody who's ever been around big IT infrastructure deployments, I spent a lot of time there, there's always a hiccup. The best laid plans, the best people in the world, there's always a hiccup. And so, planning for that, if we don't have a hiccup, we'll, we'll be very surprised. And we're planning, but we've got to be prudent on that, because that's a big deal for the next 20 years, 10 years of the hospital and technology.
Other questions? I mean, I'll go ahead. The only one I had a problem with was the hand hygiene, is because it's kind of subjective, and I, I talked about that in MBEC, but probably Dr. Kofler will agree, that's a very important aspect of it. So, you know, I'm okay. It just seems a little subjective and self-monitoring, but, but I'll, we'll see how it works.
When I first read the part about the flu vaccine, I was asking Greg about it, but when I first read it, I thought we were talking about employees. And I couldn't understand why the hospital couldn't make 100% of the employees have flu vaccine.
We have to have it too.
Then I realized it's the employees, it's the patients.
I would ask, I would be interested to hear from the management side, because this is kind of the mousetrap that you're going to live in. How does management feel about this plan? I mean, technically, it's your plan, Kevin.
I think, I think, and I, and I said the same thing last year. This is very, this is a really stretch goal, okay? It's really going to take everybody in this hospital, all the nurses on the floor, all management leadership, everybody in finance, to meet the threshold of this. They're really, are they goals that are not achievable? I think they are, but it's going to take us to be very focused and to do things that are not on this dashboard, and that's to land these projects where they need to be, go back to the rating agencies, and tell our story, and really get success not only on Wall Street, but on Main Street. And these are going to be a really tough job to do it, but I think it gets us focused. I think it really puts both the physicians and all the staff on the same page. And hopefully, with also with Dr. Jackson coming, and hopefully, a new head of critical care medicine, we're going to do this, but it's, it's a journey. It's a journey. And I think that last year's performance is absolutely incredible. I think that hopefully, we're going to have another incredible year. But thank you for asking us to comment on it. But it is going to be a very tough journey to meet these.
And just to add, if you remember that last slide that Kevin had in his presentation about our challenges, those are sometimes challenges that we can't
Control.
Control. And so, and those are very material, significant challenges, and so, we're going to be able to, whatever happens with those challenges, be able to incorporate those into our year-end results, because those are not excluded. And so, we will, that's why it requires our, our complete focus on ensuring that we meet those goals.
So, if you lose some incentive money, it comes out.
Yep, absolutely.
Yep.
Could I ask another question?
Sure.
Brent, the, the implementation cost of Epic, is that a cost that you would expense or capitalize?
It's both, actually. Based on the accounting rules, there are certain things you can capitalize, and certain things you expense. If you remember when we brought to the board the actual Epic, there were certain items, that was sort of the capitalized bucket, and there's certain lines that are operating. But both of those buckets, you have to manage, because either one can get out of control. From a capital standpoint, it's cash flow at any time. And then, on the expense items, it can hit our bottom line, which impacts the, the net profits of the organization.
And it all affects your cash.
Well, it, it all affects your bottom line. It's just the timing of when it affects your bottom line.
Right. Right, I agree, but I just, I just care, trying to figure out how much of an impact that's going to have.
It's going to have an impact.
Yeah. And, and actually, where it has one of the most, most hard to quantify is the productivity impact that you have on your staff, because this is not just a, where you have one department developing them. This is going to touch all employees at Erlanger. And so, not only are we going to have to have people that do Epic, but you're going to have to have the users be involved, which actually, they're going to have to actually balance the day-to-day activities that they're normally assigned, plus the Epic. So, there's a productivity effort. And if you remember during our budget, we budgeted a little higher, less productive, on the productivity's project, but it hopefully accounted for that.
It is going to be a built-in inefficiency in the implementation. You're going to have two systems running almost simultaneously as you build Epic. You still have to take care of patients, and you still have to run the old system.
I thought you would just plug it in and make it, watch it work. I don't like that build word.
I like that plug-and-play.
Yeah, that's right.
That'd be great.
Dr. Schumacher.
And in the incentive plan, are we including employees in that also, again?
That is a, this was a one-time. It will be, if we have another good year, I'm sure it might be brought up again next year. It'll be up.
Oh, it will.
I think it's important to clarify that, right? Incentive plan is not discretionary. It exists by virtue of us taking an action tonight. And so, the way I always like to describe it is like, if a manager has the opportunity to make $100,000, but their salary is only $50,000, that means in any given year, they might only walk home with $50,000. Whereas, employees who aren't part of the incentive plan, if their salary is $50,000 or $75,000, regardless of what happens under the, the management incentive plan, they still make that money. So, hopefully, we have a similar year next year, and we can, you know, afford a discretionary bonus. But I'm with Jack, I'd like to see a way to get employees in an incentive plan themselves, so that they can more consistently share in the upside.
And can we request that you guys start working on that plan, so that they know they've got a dog in the fight?
Mr. Chairman? Yes? Could we vote?
Are you ready to vote?
I am ready to vote.
All right.
I apologize, I need to leave.
Well, that's a good, yeah, and I want you on record. So, do I hear me?
Does that count as a motion?
I'm leaning this way, but I'm looking for a motion. I have a motion for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose a like sign. Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jose.
Thank you.
And...
Dr. Miller.
And we will go on down, and I know the hour's getting late, but we do have a few other things. Dr. Kern, chief of staff.
I have no report.
Okay. Dr. Seaburg is out this evening. Mr. Spiegel, CEO, report.
I just have one item, and that's the kickoff of the flu season, and I encourage everybody to make sure that you get your flu vaccine. I got mine. Dr. Keys gave me my shot. It's on the internet, Intranet. It's a cute video. I encourage you to watch it, but I more encourage you to make sure that you get your flu vaccine.
And normally, we arrange for the board to have theirs at some time?
We will, we will do that as well.
October. Thank you very much. Anything? I will, there are three things that I need to quickly go through. And one thing, okay, we did talk about, I've been talking to Greg, Mr. Spiegel, food book, capacity. Is there something in the works that are going to address that, or can you...
There are. I mean, there, it's, it's a multifaceted thing, but I'm working with the medical executive committee, and we're going to establish kind of criterias when, when we peak, because it will take time to implement some of the significant expand, expansion, but I'm working with the medical executive committee to develop actual criteria.
Okay. Just keep us, maybe next month, bring us up to date on that. Elections. I get to turn over the gavel in another couple of months, in November. So, if you are interested in nominating somebody for an officer, I've talked to Mike. Mike will not be, he doesn't want to be considered for chairman next year, so I've asked him kind of to be a central point. If you want to nominate somebody, check with that person, and then just get with Mike and let him have their name. We have three offices to fill, chairman, vice, and secretary. So, y'all will be thinking about that in the coming month. And also, THA, I know Rick, you're attending, is that right? And Henry's attending? And is there anybody, if there's still room for others? If any other trustee wants to attend, please let Kitty know. That's good representation, too, is great.
It is very important.
But more is better. I will be out of town, so I will not be able to attend.
And Stanley, you have one of the...
Yes, I do. The board knows this, but others may not know this, but via MBEC, we also are responsible for evaluating ourselves as a board. And you all, thanks, thank you to those of you who submitted, most of us submitted our self-evaluation over the course of the last month or so. You'll have the results of that likely coming out to you by email. I would just ask you all to reflect on them before the October board meeting, so that we can decide if there's anything we may want to change in terms of how we do business as a board, and can reflect on our bylaws as well, because we need to be sure we're staying up to date. So, be on the lookout for that, and let me know if you have any questions.
We'll be getting a pay raise. Double what we make right now.
That's a motion.
The food tonight, it was a hard, it was hard. I tried, wait a minute, I tried to feed this group sushi one night, and I got shot down everywhere. So, we went back to meat, potatoes, and peas. So, there you go. There's your raise. I don't think I have, have I left anything up, Kitty? Does anybody else have anything to bring before the board? And remember, we do need credentialing, so meet up in the boardroom for just a minute, and we will do that. And again, thanks to the management team for a great year, and we are adjourned.